Let me please call the roll. I'm here. I heard from Councilman House, he's in on a family situation, so could we please get a motion to excuse Councilman House?
So move forward.
We have motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Motion carry. If we have a spot for public comments, if they would like to come up to the podium and address the council, they may do so now. Seeing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. Either either of us we consider to be routine, we'll take them in one motion unless someone up here or someone in the audience wants further clarification. Tonight, we've got our minutes of November 11th, planning commission minutes of October 7th, DEA minutes of September 25th, housing commission minutes of August 13th, joint meeting of the council planning commission, downtown development authority, and historic district commission minutes of October 30th, another meeting of that same group for November 14th, BPU minutes for October 22, South Central Power Agency minutes of September 30th, joint workshop minutes of the council on the BPU of November 12th, the BPU financial reports for September of 19, and our recreational guide for 2019. Anybody in the audience wish anything removed? Anybody up here? Seeing none, we would like a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So move forward.
The motion is support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Consent agenda approved. Number 12, bills and accounts. They're asking us to approve $61,361. Questions, council? No.
Move to pay the bills?
Good choice.
Forward.
We have motion, we have support to pay our bills, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? That motion carry. 13, city manager report, Jeff, Earl Jeff.
Wow. My tenure might be tense. Good evening, everyone, mayor and council. Just run down a few updates relative to departments and a congratulation along the way. So the recreation department, you received in your packet and now printed copies, copies are available of the winter activity guide. And this just gives you an opportunity to see what's available to keep ourselves healthy through the course of the winter, programs and activities through the city's recreation department. I'd like to announce the promotion of Patrick Beaman from lieutenant to deputy chief of police of the co-owner police department. Deputy Chief Beaman now has over 29 years of law enforcement experience with the CPD. And he's helped every rank and is specialized in many aspects of law enforcement, so we'd like to congratulate him on his promotion. Right, the two most things that we've done on the municipal services side are holiday decorations and leaves. With this, with the snow event two weeks ago, leaf collection has been interrupted, but it is now underway again. And we do intend to continue to pick up leaves, weather permitting. We are given another week. And we have a long holiday weekend coming up. We hope to continue that into the next week for leaf collection. Speaking of the holidays, we have a number of activities that are scheduled for Saturday, December 7th. That includes the parade, the annual parade, the lights of love tree lighting, concert downtown, and other activities. So for those that are interested in all of the holiday events, we suggest that you take a look at the Chambers website. As it pertains to the city's holiday decorations, this is the time of year because we get to see them and can see them forefront that we do have a holiday decoration endowment fund at the community foundation. And we just ask that for those that might consider making a contribution to that fund to help the city in the future replace holiday decorations over time. Those donations are tax deductible and can be forwarded to the Branch County Community Foundation. The BPU board made a change to their schedule at their last meeting. And so they are rescheduled or have changed the schedule of their monthly meetings to the first Wednesday of the month at 5:00 p.m. Coincidentally enough, the first meeting in which that they would have occurred is a holiday, so in January, that will be Thursday, January 9th instead of the first Wednesday. But subsequent Wednesdays would be the first Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. City calendar, the much anticipated annually city calendar will be distributed on Wednesday, December 11th in the shopper's guide. So be aware and look for that. Additional copies will be available on city hall through the year while supply is last. And just a couple of recognitions on donations that employees of the city and the BPU have made recently. One to the branch area food pantry, just in excess of $2,000. And also contributions to shop per cop and toys for tots, both $1,000 total. So we'd like to recognize the city and BPU employees for their contributions to those worthy causes. And then lastly, given its size and importance, we make reference to the fact that the new sweeper was delivered and it's already been out and working the streets. So it's a pretty significant investment. We have two of them in our fleet and they're used quite readily. So with that, that's my manager's report.
Questions?
Hopefully not the last.
We have a motion to approve Bill Stewart's city manager report. We have motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Motion carry. Thank you, Keith. Number 14, presentation by Paul Plant of Taylor Plant and Lockham and Tom Eldridge regarding our financial report for year ending June 30th.
Before you, actually, that's the presentation, but you, within your packet, you have financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2019. I'd like to, on behalf of our finance department, kind of wish you happy holidays because that's kind of our Merry Christmas present to you, because it's a holiday. This year, in addition, we've actually shortened it a little bit because there's no single audit, so I believe it's only 72 pages long. Good reading, but if you can't make it through the 72 pages, as usual, I'd like to remind everybody that the management discussion and analysis section is in the front. It's in the pages 4 through 17, I believe. And that's probably, that's really the summary of essentially what went on during the year and then a little bit of a look forward into 2020. So I suggest a good idea to go through that. And with that, I will introduce Paul Plant from Taylor Plant and Lockham, Paul's in the walk-in today.
Run. Okay, run. He's using it too fast. Thanks, Tom. And then jokes about that, but really it's a big accomplishment for Paul and for the city and Tom and the staff. I'd like to thank them because they do a pretty good review of the financial. They look back three or four times before we finally decide it's okay. So unmonified opinion, which is the important part that the state's looking at, no comments on the management letter, so we didn't find anything that we needed to comment on there. And the unmonified thing means it's pretty much a clean opinion. With that, we can kind of go into the presentation, which we've prepared. And we can start with the general fund revenue. If you look, the property taxes really have, the property taxes really have no changes in them. They're kind of about the same percentage. Our state share revenue is going to have an increase of 4% on this and over prior year. And then the pilot increased to about $180,000. That's all based on 2017's electrical fund and other electrical numbers. We have the multiplication table there, so that does move on a two-year basis prior. Debt proceeds. And prior year, we had $1.2 million. You'll see that on some of these other slides will show for the aerial ladder along with some expenses, but I have, that's not going to be 2019, so the numbers are going to look a little bit different compared to that. I can see some spikes in there. Federal sources, again, there was $200,000 in 2019.
Yes.
Yeah, that's 2019, sorry. I've got 18 on my thing. It's nothing in 18. Public safety, actually, it's down from 52% to 47 this year. And that's part of that, 2018 included that aerial truck liner purchase. We go to the next one, that's expenditures there. Again, you can see, I just talked about public safety, no, I'm sorry. Public safety is 47% versus 52 there. So that's always the major portion of the expenditure on the sheet. And I've kind of covered everything on that last slide. So we can move on to the next slide. This is the next of the general fund, now the grants, those are the grants in. And so that's what I was talking about with the state share revenue being raised. Some of the other shows in this graph. And then you'll see prior year, there's kind of that spike, that's the extra federal money. Okay, for the money, right. Again, healthy fund balance here allows you to do some prediction for next coming up projects and things like that. You're going to hear about that, like about major urban streets too. On the major street fund, which is the next slide. 2019, that includes $273,000, a small urban grant that was given. It's actually, and I'll be honest, some of these notes are from Tom, so I appreciate that because it kind of gives me some idea where, had we looked at this stuff, obviously, there's a lot there. So second phase of the grant street and partial indebtedness street there. There's $140,000 included in that. It's a one-time money from the state, so a contribution in there. And then on the expenditure side, $722,000 of the $900,000 over was the grant portion for granted church. The transfer actually was a little bit less this year. So we went from 320 last year to 120 this year, so it does make an exchange in that revenue. And then the increase in the fund balance, mostly because of additional funding from the state. But it sounds well here, gives you guys a little bit of cushion for the 2020 project, Tom, since all those other streets that you plan on doing this for. If we move into the local street. The fund balance, just again, that's, it shows it's increased a little bit, which is that question I was talking about. Into the local streets, 2019, this is, actually, this totals way down because it's just in relation to the revenue. And really, all that's in there this year is state revenue sharing and the transfer from major streets. Again, and then it was, it was spent on micro ceiling and then some patch work that was done. That 2017 line, which is the tallest on there, there was $1.2 million related to FISPRO when you guys had that project, that's why that so spiked out of range for the rest of them. So that's kind of what shows that. Again, the fund balance sheet, the next one. And there's a slight increase in that, costs out $1,000, so that's major, there really is a little cushion to work with. Now we go into the next slide, which will be the electric fund. Now, this is electric fund net, our revenues with NSCPA now in there and non-operational items. So you'll see 2019, but actually, power sales were up $2 million in 2019. And then that's mostly, not mostly, that part that has to do with the climate, it's had a full operational year. And then also, power's were up 10% usage. Overall, non-power related costs were up about 2% in the electric fund. The big increase in the expenditures were the pilot, which we talked about, because that money comes from the electric fund, goes to the general fund, about $160,000. And then depreciation of about $100,000 made a difference in the expenditures here. And also pension costs. Now, when we talk about pension costs, it's up about $175,000. The capitalization that gets done is not expense that comes from the electric funds. So the city, we actually have to do a cost allocation, so it's not cash flow, but it increases the cost because they need to amortize some other costs into that capitalization. Move on to the next slide, which will be the television, which also is on. Yeah, we put that one back next. Now, here, you know, it's a full year this year in 2019. There was about $6,200,000 that was thrown, equipment that we just didn't, you guys just didn't need, so it was outdated and it got disposed of this year, so that's part of that number. Also, you just had a reduction in television customers. And I think probably if you went across all sites, you'd see that because everybody's gone to the YouTube flows. It's a lot more internet use TV than it is television cable. So basically, that covers that. That slide, let's move on. Waste water, one. Now, to say there's a wastewater, here, we've got Tom, we were talking about, I've got the facts, so let's start with wastewater and so forth. There was no rate increase in 2019. The rate increases were done in August, which will be 2020, so you'll see those reflected in the next year's audit. There, again, increased Clemens is kind of the theme for these two next ones, a full year Clemens. And then also, there was $345,000 that flowed into a capital projects fund on the wastewater plant last year. So that's why you see 2018 has that large revenue difference within that revenue that actually went out. And then depreciation this year actually increased $375,000 based on that water plant that was completed and started to be appreciated. My last, but not least, one is the water fund. And again, it's the same kind of theme. There was no rate increase in 2019. Those actually took place in 2020 year end. The increase, again, due to Clemens, we saw some sales increase in there, full year Clemens. And here, the small difference, there was a depreciation of about $100,000, almost some new underground infrastructure that was put in. With that, that's kind of my presentation. Again, I still make the staff and everything, and we hang out for about three weeks and then bother Tom for about a month. So it is a strenuous process sometimes. And with no single audit, that makes it a little less intrusive, but again, $750,000 in federal funds is what makes that single audit line move.
I was just going to have you kind of define what a single audit is and why, when do we do and don't have single audits?
Yeah, so quickly, just to give a little reference, that federal fund, the law being, it has to come from the federal funds, unless it's actually required, then it can be, even if it's not $750,000. $750,000 is the line. And that includes all federal funds, so everything added together, we do a determination of the $750 over, we have to do a single audit. And then you have your major programs, things like that. But I don't think we anticipate that in the future, but we'll see.
Questions for Paul? I understand. Good news, so you appreciate, Tom's here, Jeff's here, Paul, any questions for anybody? And no, thank you very much, Paul.
Right, thank you very much.
I suspect you'd like a motion to accept the 2019 audit that's presented. We have a motion and support to accept the audit, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Motion carry. Number 15, a memo from Jeff regarding appointment of AMP alternate route. Jeff?
Yes, pretty self-explanatory. Jim is the alternate that we're just appointing. You probably won't have 10, but this is the 20-year option.
He's asking us to adopt resolution 1982. Motion to adopt resolution 1982.
Support.
We have motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Motion carry. Thank you, Jeff. Number 16, we've got a letter from Keith regarding lease and option to purchase Thames Mountain Grove. As you remember, I think 42 days ago, we had this lay on the table. And I think we also know, we had a council committee look into this. We showed it, I believe Jim is here, I believe, for different, we advertised, we put it out there for anyone, we had four people tour the building. There's some talk of some partnerships, but at this point, the only offer we have on the table is the original one. Tim can answer questions or the committee members can chime in, but obviously, an offer from a local businessman who's been a good operator and it's positive news. Question, Alan?
I do have one question, just for the selection process. I would assume there's some type of minimum baseline for their applications. They are a good opportunity for community as far as like the economic development piece of it. Is there, is there some type of baseline that they have to meet?
Well, the offer was the same to everyone in terms of how the building would be structured. And we had no other offers. One or two of the people that looked at the building may in fact do a partnership with this individual. So I don't know what else to say. The offer that we would have offered to anyone, but we only had one person respond, was the same. Obviously, we would have looked at the criteria, the credentials, the experience, but we had nothing to look at.
I was just curious, if something was established before the qualification was sent out, as far as we wanted them to leave five jobs, they were going to come into the $100,000. Were they going to go with the recommendations from the state? I was just curious if there was some type of baseline already established?
So then, within the lease, one, initially, it's a two-year lease, so we still have control of the property. And they have to meet the requirement for having established the business for a period of time, I believe it's six months in this agreement, and a certain $75,000 investment. And so those are two, the two criteria. We actually received this offer upon taking possession of the building. We received this offer pretty quickly. Subsequently, with the other couple of buildings that we acquired, we're preparing RFQs. That will be much more detailed and more widely advertised. But yeah, we received, as is the case, when we receive an offer, we put it in the form of a, of a sales agreement. And then the council begins to react and act on that sales agreement, be in favor of their opposition team.
Any questions? Our actual meeting at this point, after 42 days, to adopt resolution, adopt or not adopt resolution 1983, and approve the commercial agreement A1914 and the option to purchase agreement A1950. This will require a roll call vote.
Does three center both in each one or one together?
Obviously, the rental is, is not really big news in the city. $275 a month is not really what this deal is about. It's about getting investment in there, getting the rehabilitation, and then giving him the option to purchase it, for what we purchased it for, so it's really, we're not making money here. To my mind, it's just a loan. So one, over.
We have a motion and support to adopt the resolution, the lease agreements and purchase agreements as described. Any other questions? If not, would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pexel?
Yes.
Councilmember Basil Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope Holm?
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapp?
Yes.
Mayor Crick?
Yes, motion carry. Number 17, a letter from Keith regarding charitable gaming license for the Coldwater Township Sunrise Rotary. Cam, is that out here in the audience? I do have a honor. Do I get this speech?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is just essentially a renewal because as members of the co-owner township Sunrise Rotary, they've done this for a number of years. The state is now requiring that they update that designation. We've done this, I know, in my tenure, at least one other time for a community organization to be designated that for the purposes of obtaining their gaming license. So we're just asking the passage of resolution 1984. The Coldwater Township Sunrise Rotary actually operates a raffle in January. Put a plug in for that. And so this, this provides for them obtaining the gaming license in the state of Michigan.
Question, motion? Does a member want me to abstain? How a member of Sunrise Rotary want me to abstain?
I would be so.
We have, we need a motion to allow Councilmember Beckman to abstain.
So move, support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Dan Mike, be quiet. Now, we're looking for a motion to adopt or not adopt resolution 1984.
Move to adopt, support.
Thank you, we have a motion, I have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Gaming license is great. And thank you, Jim. Without a committee on that, a memo from David Satter regarding equipment purchases.
You showed up a picture of this $4 million sweeper.
Thank you very much. I'm back again with my back home. And well, the, back when we originally brought this to the council, the question was raised, why was one so less expensive than the rest? And I found out that they can't get it, so it's been eliminated from the bidding. So now we just have the two bids, which are the JCB and the AIS. And the difference is a little less than $900 in the two. The JCB seems to be way better as far as the operator, the vision and everything, the seat, and how it reacts. And so I recommend that we buy the JCB.
From a municipal purchasing policy standpoint, this is a, this is the one correct, but this is a state purchase. So it has gone through that series of bidding at the state level for establishing a purchase price that the municipalities can piggyback on to meet that, that standard purchasing process.
Questions for David Keith? Obviously, he, he piece of equipment would be announced, so he's asking that we adopt resolution 1969.
Move to adopt, support.
We have motion and support. Final questions? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Motion carry. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
We have a last banner agenda for public comments. Seeing none, we have unfinished business with our all.
Yeah, I'd like to do an update on most recent planning council meeting. As you know, we were given responsibility to take a look at all of our ordinances and so forth. We've been working with a consultant, but the last meeting, we took on four of them and spent two hours, maybe two of them all. But to give you some idea where we're headed, the one that we had an hour-long discussion on was the issue of marijuana sales or whatever as a result of the law passage. And staff was looking for input so that they could develop a draft ordinance. So we kind of leaning towards the industrial park area. We talked about what types of licenses we would be interested in because there are multiples and which ones we would not. We made the decision to go with state approval of those. There seems to be quite a history in developing in municipalities, villages, et cetera, that if they get into the selection process, there's litigation over why one over another. So the state has an approval process, we're leaving it up to them. So with that information, we anticipate in the future meeting, getting a draft ordinance we'll look at and perhaps revise again. And that eventually, of course, will recommend it to you, so that process is started. Another issue that has surfaced quite a bit lately is farm animals in the city. And our, our ordinance is really very simple. There's a licensing process and that's it. It doesn't address numbers, kinds of, space needed, any of that information. So we had tried a discussion there and again, the directions on what kind, what limits, what kind of animals, and that gets a little hairy, what is a large animal, what isn't. There are, there are kids that have four age rabbits. They necessarily want to eliminate that. But gave them some directions on what kind, how many, and also a licensing process and a renewal process. And that licensing process in our current ordinance does not even have a renewal process and an inspection or enforcement. So again, we gave a lot of information, a lot of discussion there, and we expect, again, a draft ordinance from staff that we'll look at again and then bring to you. The other one was signage. As you all know, that is an issue at times. And as we worked with a consultant and as we've looked at them, our sign ordinance is basically one size fits all, whether it's an industrial area up by 69 downtown. And we have discovered that you can, you can't vary within a zoning area, but you can have different signage allowable in different zoned areas. So we've asked them to take a look at that. We also asked them to take a look at the, gave some direction on temporary signs for garage sales and political and whatever. And as we talked about those, it got, it's interesting, probably look at a significant change in that sign ordinance because it was a recent Supreme Court. And as we talked about those, it got, it's interesting, probably look at a significant change in that sign ordinance, because there was a recent Supreme Court issue on what we could and could not do with signage. Basically, we can say where and how many and what size, but we cannot, cannot, what do you kind of ordinance say limitation on the content? That's free speed, so we can say where, how many, what size, but we can't say what can be on, what can't be on. So between the, looking at maybe different signage, between zone areas, temporary signage, probably be a significant change in that ordinance. And again, we expect to see a draft ordinance at some future date. We also talked about, very minimally, we were already two hours into the evening, so the landscaping was the other one. And we really didn't get to that. Probably the brief thing we learned was that ours is, of course, it's considered demeaning or demanding and unreasonable and expensive. And so, and says, it's really kind of confusing, so we've got to spend some time on that yet. That is, that's probably going to be the number one item on the agenda the next time. And again, we'll be giving some direction to staff and hope to have some changes in draft ordinances that will come back. And then the other thing we talked about was a lot of our ordinances, and there's some wording about how many parking spaces, and we're thinking that we don't need to say that. Most of the time, businesses put in more than what our minimum is anyway, and it seems like it's let the business decide how many parking spots they need to have. Those, that was about a two hour and fifteen minute discussion, ten point. And so some things are underway. We haven't really gone in depth with a consultant yet on others. These are the ones we've targeted first. More to come.
Summary, Mike, and I would say you're all allowed to come to planning commission meetings and/or express questions or comments or input into Mike or I as members. But, yeah, it's going to take some time, but that's a good summary, Mike, very good. Any immediate question on that right now?
Just some thoughts, if you're concerned with the animal sizes for four age, they actually delineate between large animals and small animals. So they have that definition based on species.
Just point.
So. Just a suggestion, you know, if you can't find it, others, what it is that would matter.
And we have looked at some other ordinances too, in this process. That comes up here, I've activated, looked at them, and they're kind of all over the place. There isn't any common, real common ground, really. They're all over the place.
Our ordinance goes back to the nineties, so it's the exact same as when it was when I was here originally. And it's probably on the, on the spectrum, on the far side of the permissive, where most communities are restrictive and are talking about allowing chickens or goats or other animals. We've always allowed them in some manner. And now we're, as a, as a community, looking at how to, how to arrange that back in.
So if you do update it, would you still have to grandfather the one you are to be this?
If they're, if the license isn't in existence, we have to do that, I believe.
Well, the city attorney I met after the planning meeting, so because it is, if it were in the zoning ordinance, there's, there is justification for that because you're talking about land uses. But it's a police power ordinance, and so it's in our general quota ordinance, and so there's, there's no expectation that we would have to do that. That's an update from our system. So for those situations where there are large animals or numerous animals, we could either, they're either going to be permitted or not. And if they are permitted, they would be subject to a, to a licensing process.
Okay. Any unfinished business? Any new business at our level?
Yes, one of the things that I was out and about talking during my campaign was the complete streets policy that you had in your master plan. I did reach out and ask kind of where that was at. I know it's on your to-do list. One of the concerns that a lot of people expressed was the safety they felt walking around the sidewalks. Some of the networks in the first ward were not complete, especially going to like the markets, religious services, to the park. So I'd just like to bring that up, and maybe hopefully sometime in the next year, or we try and work that out, to get that complete streets policy worked out and coordinated somehow.
We've talked about it, and we budgeted some money, and if it's a huge, we have the survey from that interim we had a few years ago, surveyed the fourth one, I think. The numbers are large, and, you know, I mean, you might imagine, we have, we have a history with it. We used to fix all the sidewalks, and then we, we required the homeowners to do all the repairs. And then we got away from that, and it's kind of hard to go back to that. We know it's a problem.
Well, and sidewalk repair is just one part of the, to the commissioner, the council members' point. Sidewalks are just one part of a complete streets policy as to how you, how you move people all around the community. So the sidewalk repairs or the extension of pathways and or bike lanes or those type of things are all incorporated into the policy. As you're doing work, it doesn't necessarily dictate what you do, but as you're doing work, what do you consider when you consider the next road reconstruction project or prioritize certain movements over time?
Do you have an update on Thompson and the homeowner, Michael?
Yep, so if you haven't been by, it's, it's in, it has a driveway and sidewalk. We're now awaiting installation of the gas lines, so we get some heat in the building. And then we'll give tours. Till we get heat, we can't do all the, you know, with the transportation of the unit. We have, we have just touch-ups that should have to have done. Mechanicals are just put in within the last couple weeks, so that's all there. Electricity is in and running, so we're getting closer to being, I haven't been out there today or Friday, but the garage contractor is, has been hired, and it's just getting in there. So the garage at the end of construction here, hopefully shortly, that's going to be status of that. The, that larger, the larger idea of the Neighborhood Improvement Authority, that's coming back to you at the next, at the first December meeting, from financing and tax capture process of that neighborhood. So we can definitely, for those that want to see the building, it's, the work is ongoing, so we're making progress, although maybe not as fast as we'd hoped at this point.
The homeowner, Michael, that they still haven't replaced the sidewalk yet, and they have a foundation sticking up with no garage on it?
So that's, that's, it has a valid building permit, though they haven't done anything to it. They're within that six-month window. Maybe Sean has a little bit more information on this, but, you know, the prior owner passed away. It's up for sale, and it's now just kind of, now just kind of nimble.
They actually just pulled a new building permit last week, again, paid for it and everything again.
So this is the third building permit on him?
Yes.
Was it a different, any different person, or was this the same owner?
Oh, it's the same contractor, but he did talk to Kenny about getting it. It's going to be done this time.
What's going to be done?
They're going to finish the whole of the garage and everything.
They are going to put a garage on it now?
Yes.
In the sidewalk and driveway and?
Uh, it's not going to be entirely taken off the sidewalk. Um, just the driveway is a given. No, that would definitely be.
Michael, what else would you like to say? Thank you. Any other question on the board of this? If not, we are.